You need mining, mine's here.
We are live?
Hey Beck, don't forget my notary seal.
Don't forget your what?
My notary seal before I leave. You don't have to get it now, no. But I just don't want to forget. How you doing Rich?
Too bad, how about yourself?
Did you look at all that shit? Did you see all that shit? Yeah, it wasn't. They're very lengthy. Here they are right here Rich.
Did you have the ones that Dan actually said?
Yeah. No, no, oh, thank you.
Did you get that on Bootsy?
Not that I remember.
Uh, Bootsy, CMO, they're turning this into her.
I think that clock might be slow.
When did you send it to me? Did you send it Max?
Yeah.
Let's start there. And when, like maybe Friday or something? Yeah. Well, I was consumed with preparing all these ordinances for you guys tonight. I spent six hours on Saturday and four hours yesterday to get all these done, so.
Hopefully we didn't.
I'll look for your email.
You're fine. I was glad you even.
Do they want changes Max?
I'll see at seven o'clock. Are you guys ready or, everybody ready? Like to call the Oglesby City Council meeting to order please. Roll call.
Baldridge?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Steph Nelly?
Here.
Kern.
Here. Before we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, uh, there is a thing if you want to make a modification to the agenda, it should be done right after the roll call. So, I know we have a lot of items on here. I see four items I think, uh, could be removed. Uh, my recommendation would be the item under Old Business for the ordinance for the chief's compensation. Um, I still think that we should do the other, um, city clerk and ambulance director first. Um, the two items I added, uh, were to approve executive session minutes and then to release the minutes. I made an error. I finally got a chance to listen to them on Saturday and they are the wrong minutes. What I'm looking for is not in there. Uh, and then the other item is number twenty-four commissioner appointment. I think with six days, it's too early to, to appoint. We have not had a chance to, to sit as a council and go through the, uh, the items yet or, uh, or go through them. I will talk a little bit more about that when we get to, um, Attorney General Opinion Bureau, but I'd like to recommend that those four items be removed. Does anybody have any talk or discussion on any of those?
Okay.
I'd like to differ on the commissioner appointment. I believe we cannot get that resolved this evening.
Yeah, we were, we were all sent those in real time when the applications came in, so it's not like we haven't had a chance to look them over. We can go in, we can discuss it and do what we need to do.
Okay, what about the other three items?
Okay, which exactly other three items?
Uh, number, well, the one doesn't have a number. It's the chief's compensation under Old Business and the other ones are twenty-two and twenty-three.
Uh, executive session minutes, we're going to be reviewing, I believe, in July because that's our semi-annual review of, uh, of minutes. So, I think we can do that all at the same time. So, if you want to take those off, I'm not opposed to taking those off.
Neither am I.
What about the, uh, police chiefs thing? You want to move that to or you want to keep doing that one?
I think we should, uh, go ahead and make this appointment tonight and allow them to, uh, get involved in that.
I understand the police chiefs compensation one. Do you want to do that one yet tonight?
I don't think we should.
I think we should hold off on the, uh, police comp.
So, do you want to remove the three? If I can get a motion to remove the other three then?
It is going to be retroactive, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have no problem with the ordinance. I just think it's out of order.
Okay, so, I will make a motion to remove approve executive session minutes, which is currently agenda item number twenty-two. Release executive session minutes, which is currently agenda item number twenty-three. And, uh, let's.
Under Old Business number one, two, three, four, five.
Under Old Business, modify police chief, police chiefs compensation.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Alright, that'll lighten things up a little bit. Okay, uh, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. The true republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, number four, public comment on agenda items only. Alright, thought he was moving to the podium, sorry. Um, okay, seeing that there is none, number five. Approve minutes from the May twentieth, twenty-four, twenty, twenty-four city council meeting and executive session. If there's no additions, corrections, or modifications, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
Doesn't matter.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number six, approve bills as presented for payment in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents.
I'll make a motion to approve the bills. Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seven, approve April twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four payroll in the amount of one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and one dollars and forty-nine cents. If there's no additions or modifications, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Got a really great item here. Number eight, IMEA scholarship presentation. Baldridge?
I'd like to introduce Ed Corbill from IMEA.
Thank you Commissioner Baldridge. Good evening, uh, Mayor Kern, members of the city council, Oglesby City Council. On behalf of the Illinois Municipal Utilities Association, I'm very pleased to be here tonight and very proud to have the opportunity to honor one of your outstanding high school seniors, uh, Aiden Anderson. He submitted a, of which I have a copy, uh, very well-written winning essay. I'm on the judging panel of six, uh, and, uh, I voted for his. I'm very proud of it. Very well done. So, at this point, I would like to call Aiden up here to the lectern and his parents.
Can you turn, can you turn the microphone so?
Oh, I'm sorry.
The folks at home can hear you?
Oh, gotta do it all again Ed? No kidding.
Yep, you're good, you're good.
You're good.
Okay. As I said, Aiden was one of four finalists in this year's competition. I have a copy of his, uh, well-written essay. He chose the topic of, uh, cybersecurity, the electric grid security. He had some very good, excellent suggestions uh, for improving the utility grid system. So, want to thank you on that. And, uh, before we begin a little bit further, first of all, I'd like to present you with your framed certificate, finalist certificate and award. Congratulations, but, uh, equally important, probably the most important, a thousand dollars. Could I have a moment to take a photo with?
Please, please.
Of course.
Absolutely.
Anybody in the city council?
Sure, sure.
I'll do it, fantastic.
Signed in the back row. Yeah, he in the middle is Commissioner Baldridge, mayor. I'll be going again. Do you want to give me your phone? Oh, God.
Nice job, congratulations.
Did everybody get in here? You got a four. Okay. Congratulations. I understand you're attending Illinois State University.
Thank you Ed, always good to see you. Thank you. Alright. Alright, excellent. Next item, number nine, presentation by Surf Internet. Baldridge?
Yeah, so as everyone's aware, we've had a little bit of problems here while implementing the entire Surf project, uh, getting it completed. I've been in contact with a very wonderful person representative from, uh, Surf and, uh, I'd like to introduce Faith. She could answer any questions anybody might have and, uh, give a little insight.
Alright, good evening. Thank you so much for letting us come. Um, I'd just like to start off by saying that we at Surf value very much this community and I know it's been a little, a process as most things are. We are dedicated to resolving some of the issues around some of those orange worms coming up around the telephone poles and just some of the left behind construction. Um, a lot of this is just a process as we're building and designing and having to be flexible and move and supply chain. So, we really just wanted to come to ensure you that we're on this. We have been waiting for some supplies to wrap up some of the construction cleanup and just make sure that everybody's on the same page. And if you have questions, we're going to stick around in this room right over here.
Until we go on.
Okay, and just, just for a little bit, if you have specific questions about your house or something you're concerned about, we're here to hear them today. We're here to take action on them as best we can and give you guys some one-on-one context. You can reach out to me. I'm with commercial sales. With me I have Audrey Miller, who's our market manager, and Corey Nelson, who's, you've probably seen around town a few times in a Surf drop. So, he's going to be able to provide you a lot more around construction. I can provide you a lot more information around sales and Audrey can bring in around plans and where we're going to next. So, I feel like the ping pong ball right now, but, um, any questions that are good for the good of the group? We would be happy to take them.
So, like my high house, the orange worm's still coming out. So, like, it's just held up with black tape now, so it's already fallen off once.
Sure.
So, like, how much longer before that happens?
Or do you?
I hope it within about a week, which is where I have the whole inside of it right there. Cause there's no, there's no fiber in it. So, that's, yeah, so you've got to feed it, you've got to probably. Um, literally, you see shit out of the windows right here.
So, yeah, and some of this, not excuses, just explanation is supply chain. Just waiting on the right things to get here and coordinating that and getting all the people, it's a lot of cooks in the kitchen, to get coordinated and brought together to be able to do this successfully, but we are more than committed to bringing this to conclusion where everybody's happy and you don't even realize we were here except that your internet is fantastic. So, um, other than that, we'll be around. Feel free to stop in and ask us questions.
Uh, just one question for the good of the group. Um, I know a, a question was brought up a few months ago, something about that there wasn't service on Dale. And the thing that was interesting about that is the very first home that we, we honored, we gave him a plaque and a certificate was actually on Dale Avenue. So, I didn't know if it was not the whole thing or anything. Is, is there any areas of the city that are still yet to be served for any concerns out there for people?
So, a lot of this, Dale was a very unique situation because of where they were on that block. I received that call. Uh, where they were on that block, they were only two addresses to that hole. And just through the construction, that one had just gotten sidestepped. So, we, we resolved that.
Okay, great.
Within a couple of weeks of that happening, but the person had already gotten serviced or someone else. So, by the time it may fail away to the people that could do something about it, it had kind of taken care of itself. It's lit now. Um, and I believe anything else, I know there's a mobile home park maybe out has. Sorry, I get turned around.
Well, we do, we do have two technically in the.
Yeah, so this one's a little further out, not the one on Walnut.
Okay.
Um, so like I know there's some interest out there. The way we do this is we figure out how much interest, how much does it cost us to build it? So, there are going to be some pockets like that. Um, but interest is going to drive anywhere we're not built yet.
Yep.
How far out we're going to extend.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Get a partial thing of the total. Yeah, right now, uh, aren't there just materials? Well, I think majority of this material.
And the, and the other thing about that is, is when, once construction is completed, then we're going to come back and we're going to make sure everything's done. Construction. Okay, well, we're going to make it right. I will give you my part. You can feel free to call me. Everybody can turn on. We will get it done.
Thank you. We really appreciate the face to face.
Absolutely. Thanks for letting us come tonight. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Number ten, accept and place on file the May first, twenty twenty, uh, April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three motor fuel tax audit. Um, any questions, concerns over this?
No. I think it's, uh, self-explanatory.
Pretty much a requirement.
So, uh, it's, yeah, it's, it's a requirement, so, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, we put it on file.
Second.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eleven through thirteen is this giant packet of stuff right here with all the, the TIF modifications. First one is ordinance number, uh, one-two-four-nine-dash-zero-six-zero-three-twenty-four approves the first TIF amendment to TIF six. This is the, this is kind of the, the long process that we've gone through. All we're doing is adding the, um, some of the downtown areas back into, uh, TIF six that, that were in TIF one that came back out. The goal was, is, as I don't know if people have heard from the previous hearings, but the goal was to try to put as few residential homes in there as possible. In fact, that's why it no longer goes all the way up, uh, North Columbia because we would have had to put another seventy-five homes to be able to get that in there. So, any questions, concerns over this? If I can get a motion in a second?
I'll make a motion to approve, uh, do we approve all three of them or?
You want, we can do?
Well.
Sure. What's the rule? Like I just read them all off and then you approve all three at once or you got to do?
I think, I think you should do them separate.
Because they're TIF projects, I think you should do them individually.
Okay, we'll do the first one.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number twelve, ordinance number one-two-five-zero-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four designates the amended redevelopment project area. Same thing.
I'll make a motion to, uh, pass the ordinance number twelve-fifty-zero-six-zero-three-two-four.
Second.
Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number thirteen, ordinance number one-two-five-one-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four adopts tax increment allocation financing.
Okay, I guess I'll make a motion that we approve this one.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number fourteen, place on file recommendations from the zoning board of appeals, uh, regarding longer variance request. This is just the, uh, the recommendation placed on file. Can I get a motion in a second to place it on file?
Make a motion to place on file the recommendation for the longer variance request.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number fifteen, this is the longer variance request, the rear setback to allow for offense. My understanding for it was, um, for them to allow the fence to be able to kind of go in, we have to be able to, uh, allow the variance request. And my understanding is that they talked about it and it did pass at the zoning board of appeals.
I'll make a motion that, uh, I'll make a motion that, uh, longer variance request.
Second.
Setback to allow for offense.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number sixteen, old business, uh, ordinance number one-two-five-two-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four grants rezoning request to Nick and Ally Augustiniak for Walnut Street property from R-two to B-four. Uh, this is in regards to the rezoning request that they are looking to put a, uh, very nice building up, uh, in that area down there, uh, for a B-four. Um, any questions, concerns?
What's, what's the actual building for?
It's going to be for their.
Construction.
Construction business. It's a construction business, which, uh, yeah, I don't know if the, the pictures are in your packet anymore, but it was really nice to.
It's a nice building. It went through the planning commission and everything. They're going to do a nice job with it, so.
Alright, I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next one, place on file ordinance number one-two-five-three-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four, construction agreement with Amarin for Malik Road Delivery Point Project. Baldridge?
Yeah, so I gave a long explanation in the last meeting. Uh, we sent it to Pat. He's got the paperwork done now. Both of these here up. So, I'd like to place on file, construction agreement for Amarin for Malik Road Delivery Plant, uh, Point Project.
Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next one, place on file ordinance number one-two-five-four-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four wholesale connection agreement with city of Oglesby, IMEA and Amarin. Baldridge?
Again, this is just to accept that Pat had, uh, drafted this up. So, I'd like to make a motion to place on file ordinance number twelve-fifty-four-zero-six-zero-three-two-four.
I'll second that motion.
I don't, we, we'll do a roll call here. I have no problems with that. Pat, we were able to look at it and, and make sure that everything was. I remember last thing we talked about it and looked at it. Any problems or concerns with that?
No, I, I really don't have any problems or concerns with it. On the construction agreement, I would point out that there are certain expenses the city's going to be paying. I hope somebody has looked at those and has approved them, um, because it does commit you to do that, but other than that, I don't have any comments. They're, they're very tech, technical documents.
Yeah, those were the Viper switch, I believe, the cost for that to get in there.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, uh, roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item, uh, ordinance number one-two-five-five-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four reduces number of class D liquor licenses to two. So, this, uh, was, we, we noticed that we had an opening of, uh, class D liquor licenses. Uh, we kind of thought up to this point that we've reduced all of our available liquor licenses to zero, so that makes it to where if a new business wants to come into town, they're going to have to come and kind of present to the council. Uh, we knew that was for class A and B, but we found out that there was an available class D. So, this reduces it to having zero left, uh, for availability. Again, not a problem if somebody wants to come in and pitch to the city and we'll, and we can, uh, expand that always, but this makes it to where somebody won't have to worry about somebody just coming in just to make a gaming terminal or something like that. So, any questions, concerns over that?
Nope.
If not, I can get a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item, place on file ordinance number one-two-five-eight-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four allows the use of city-owned property for a solar generating project and authorizing the execution of this generation sighting and operating agreement with the Illinois Municipal.
It's another one we've talked quite a bit about. Uh, Pat has drafted up here now, so we're going to place it on file. So, I'd like to place on file ordinance number twelve-fifty-eight-zero-six-zero-three-two-four.
I'll second that motion.
Uh, Pat, is there any concerns about any changes? I know this is one of the ones that we approved like well over a year ago and now looks like we have a new agreement. Is there any major changes?
No, this agreement pretty much parallels the one that was approved several years ago with a different vendor. Um, I didn't have any problems with it. I went through every one of them.
Excellent, awesome. Uh, roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number seventeen, new business, uh, ordinance number one-two-five-seven-dash-zero-six-zero-three-two-four modifies golf cart licensing requirements. Um, I think this actually kind of generated from the clerk's office. We noticed that there was some problems with the, the golf cart ordinance. Is that, is that accurate?
The clerk's office and the chief.
Okay. Well, I won't call the chief to come up to speak about it though, but, uh, my understanding was, I think, if I'm correct, it was May first was the one and we realized that there was people that wanted to get out earlier than that. So, this backs up the date in time of when we can start the, uh, uh, the licensing. Is that pretty much right?
Cause a lot of people buy their carts before May first and they would have to come and get a license that would then expire May first. So, we figure if we do it on January, we're good.
Okay.
So, basically what we're doing is just moving from May first to January first.
Yeah, so they don't have to come in January obviously, but it gives them the opportunity. So, okay. Um, any questions, concerns about that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
And I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Next item, agreement with JL, JLN Holdings for Summer Fun Fest parking. This is one of the things that we pretty much do a new agreement each year, which just makes sure all the insurances, everything's covered. Um, basically the agreement is we cut the grass and they allow us to park there for fun.
I'd like to make a motion to pass an agreement with JLN Holdings for Summer Fun Fest Parking.
Second.
Roll call please.
Baldridge?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Next item is Attorney General Opinion, Attorney General's Opinion Bureau, Kern. This is where we kind of get into the, the crux of tonight. Okay. Um, the three prior appointments to this council in the past decade were done when there was about a year left on the term. This is the first time I'm aware of there being more than twenty-eight months remaining on the term and more than a hundred and thirty days from the next consolidate election in the county. In accordance with sixty-five ILCS five-three-one-dash-ten-dash-fifty, which applies to all municipalities in the state of Illinois that are under five hundred thousand population. It states that in this case, at the next consolidate election and at the election for the remaining two years of the term will need to occur. The statute further goes on to have very specific procedures on how to fill the vacancy when it is less than twenty-eight months. The procedure is that the mayor will appoint the vacancy with the advice and consent of the council, which is what has occurred in the previous appointments in the city of Oglesby. In fact, section sixty-five ILCS five-three-one-ten-fifty-one, which applies to municipalities over five hundred thousand, the procedure is well-defined on what to do if the vacancy is under twenty-eight months or over twenty-eight months, and it matches. Unfortunately, in this section that applies to municipalities that are under five hundred thousand population, the statute only gives procedures for appointment of the vacancy for those that are under the twenty-eight months remaining. Any references to a specific appointment procedure when there are more than twenty-eight months remaining is sadly absent. There is obviously some dissenting opinions on the city council of how to handle this appointment and who gets to name the appointee, which as you can imagine, when there's a disagreement, would be pretty important. So, what do we do? I have consulted with our city attorney, the Illinois Municipal League, the state board of elections, and the Attorney General Opinions Bureau. Unfortunately, none of these groups have the definitive answer today. Just a best recommendation or have not had the opportunity to respond yet because the appointment of a commissioner had just gone on the agenda on Friday. Our city attorney agrees that it isn't clearly defined. The IML president Brad Cole even told me, this isn't the first time there has been a poor written statute and that in lack of a clearly defined procedure, you would need to default to sixty-five ILCS five-four-three-four. That has the very general terminology in it of the remaining members of the council within thirty days after the vacancy occurs shall appoint. He even told me, I'm certain they're going to be hung up on the term appoint. While it doesn't mean that any one of them necessarily get to appoint, you don't laterally, unilaterally get to do that either in commission form. It is more of a nomination by recommendation for appointment, of which you will need to get three votes for anyone, no matter what. The Attorney General Opinion Bureau was kind enough to take my call on Friday and when they, when I explained to them the problem, they looked at the statute and agreed, you're right. There does seem to be some missing information there and they said they would look through their database for both formal and informal opinions on the matter. They got back to me today and told me they were surprised, but they didn't actually have any formal opinion on the matter that was ever published or even an informal one. They did tell me to get a formal opinion on the matter, that it could be generated from our local state's attorney's office. When I communicated with the state, uh, Illinois State Board of Elections, right when they opened at eight AM today, I was referred over to, uh, elections operations. There, they told me as far as they knew, it has always been the mayor's appointment with advice and consent of the council. I then pointed out the discrepancy in the statute. He didn't believe me at first, but opened it up, looked at it and said, wow, that's interesting. I've never seen that before. He informed me that all he was allowed to do was explain the process to me, which in his understanding was just as he stated earlier, that the mayor or president appoints with advice and consent of the council. However, he is not authorized to give a legal opinion on items of interpretation or the state statute. For that, he recommended back to the Attorney General's Opinion Bureau. So, what am I, did you want to, before I go into the, the thing?
You go right ahead.
Okay.
You're on a roll.
I'm almost done. There you go. So, what am I requesting? If you recall back nine months or so ago, we had an issue with getting rid of a bucket truck. The issue has now been resolved to what I think is everyone's satisfaction. However, back then it wasn't. We had a sealed bid situation and the two highest bidders were someone that was an agent of the city. Our legal advice was that we couldn't award the bid to the agent of the city in accordance with state statute. For those that might not recall, we tabled the issue because one of the members of this council stated they were looking for an opinion from the Attorney General's Office. So, we tabled the item for quite some time and we had no evidence if something ever was submitted, if something was received back and what it said, or if something simply never came back. After many months, we ended up taking the item to online auction and the matter was resolved better than the sealed bid situation in the first place. But the point I'm trying to make is there was a concern from one member of this council about a statute procedure and we held up the process to supposedly get an answer from the Attorney General's Office. So, I think the procedure of how we appoint people to our council is more important. So I think the procedure of how we appoint people to our council is more important than the disposal of an old bucket truck. And for the latter, we tabled something to get an answer. Keep in mind, even our attorney, the IML, State Board of Elections and the Attorney General's Opinion Bureau agree that the state statute seems to have some missing information or ambiguity in it. None of those groups, to my knowledge, thought that about the agent of the city purchasing a bucket truck. So I kindly ask, if we can't unanimously agree on a candidate for appointment, that we wait to get an opinion from the procedure for the Attorney General's Office. After all, we did it for a bucket truck. What's everyone's thought about that and for us being consistent?
I'd like to go on record and disagree with your opinions and your supposed Attorney General's recommendations. We've interpreted the law ourselves. I feel confident that we're interpreting it correctly. I don't see any reason we shouldn't proceed tonight. I'd like to go next.
You're going to bring up the state statute?
Yeah.
Pat, do you want to put anything on, talk about that at all?
No, I just think the statutes are in conflict with each other. You know, one specifically applies to a commission form of government, but the rest of the municipal code applies to everything that's not specifically addressed in the commission chapter of the code. And that's the section that is, that indicates the mayor gets to appoint with the advice and consent of the council, but only in certain situations where the election is closer than it is in this case. So it's just as silent as to what's happening here, which means in my opinion, we have to go back to the commission form of government code section, which simply says that the remaining members of the council, within 30 days after the vacancy occurs, shall appoint a person to fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term or until the vacancy is filled by interim election under 3.1-10-50, which is what's going to have to occur here, because the election is far enough off that we can meet the interim election before the commissioner's term has expired.
So Pat, what you're saying is we go revert to commissioner form of government?
We don't.
We would go to commissioner form of government.
So, in my opinion, that's the controlling statute since the other one is so vague.
Why don't we go to a different form of government when we're clearly commission form of government?
Well, I don't think anybody's suggesting you go to a different form of government, Rich. The question is how we interpret how you fill a vacancy. And there's one provision in the commission form of government, but there's completely different provisions in the municipal code generally, which are what's supposed to control if it's not defined in the commission form of government section of the code.
So to answer Rich's question better, what would happen if there was 27 months remaining on this, what would happen then?
The mayor would get to nominate and the council would get to provide advice and consent.
So the point, the point is, the reference that you're talking about, that you can't get to the authority for that, it references this other reference and we do have to go out for an election for it. The problem is, it gives very specific guidelines about the mayor making appointments when it's under 28 months. When it's above 28.
Have you ever seen that?
No, but I don't see that it has any bearing on what's going on here.
I think the bearing would be as if in fact he got his way, he appointed whoever he wanted to get in there. I believe it says here that we have the opportunity as a council to remove that person.
Well, he doesn't get to make the final decision. He might, under the general code, get to nominate somebody, but you guys all decide whether that person is going to be engaged or not. So you never get to that point, Rich.
What are we, what's the holdup here tonight? Is it that we're going to try to hold this up by nominating one person and then not nominating anyone else? What's the conflict?
What I'm requesting is that, if I'm wrong, you would get the Attorney General's Office to be able to tell you that. I believe, everybody I've talked to about this, they believe there's simply an error in the municipal code that it is not referred to. If you go down to the next section where it talks about municipalities over 500,000, it clearly defines, I know, we don't apply, in our section, it's not defined, that's my point.
Whenever we're ready, I'm glad to take this through.
Sure. Because I got something else to show, then if you want to look at that, that's okay.
So, this is what applies to us, Article 4, commission form of government. And as you see here, you start going through it, organization. If you're going from, let's say, an aldermanic form of government to the commission form of government, this is how you do it. So they're telling you how to do that. I'm going to bring us down to where the rubber meets the road about what we're talking about. Okay? So right here, the mayor and commissioners are elected, so on and so forth. And then if vacancy occurs, right here, here's where it says. This is what we're looking at here. So basically, what we're looking at is where it says the remaining members of the council. In other municipalities that are cities, and when we start talking about 500,000 people and so on and so forth, we start getting into home rule and they're talking about cities with an aldermanic form of government. This is specifically us, which is the commission form of government. And it's very clear, and opinion's an opinion, but this is what the law says, this is the law. So if it says the remaining members, then that's very clear to me. It doesn't say anything about advice and consent, doesn't say anything about nomination from the chair or the mayor. It just says the remaining members of the council. Hang on, time is mine. Now, let me, let me take you over and let's look at what the IML says.
They have a summary of it.
Indeed, they do. Here we go, filling vacancies in elected office. Okay, I mean, we obviously know when a vacancy occurs, I'm not going to spend a lot of time here making the appointment. Now, we go into the different types of governments here. The mayor or village president has 60 days to appoint corporate authorities. Now they start giving you the footnotes of where to find it in the law. Let's go down to the one that applies to us, commission form of government, right there. What's the footnote? 11. Vacancies on the council and municipalities that have adopted the commission form of government are filled by appointment by the remaining members of the council within 30 days after the vacancy occurs. Let's go down to number 11 here and see where that brings us to. Same thing, remaining members of the council. So to me, the Illinois Municipal League is telling me the same thing. And state statute says what it says, you can't add words into it, the law is the law. So to me, that's pretty clear. Now I have one more thing that I'd like to show you, and this is how it was done the last time around.
At this time, I'm going to move number 17, the nomination and appointment of a commissioner of public health and safety. Do you want to have a nomination?
You want me to make a motion that we do it out of order? Do I need to do that first, do it out of order? Okay. I just wanted to make a quick comment. I just wanted to say, we really did appreciate all the great applicants that put their names in the hat. We had 10 applicants and it was great to have so many good candidates. It was also nice to see so many that, that when it came to serving these communities, the list was filled with people that have past experience, people currently serving their community or just people eager to get into a capacity where they can serve more. I hope that we get to see some of those names on the ballot in the upcoming years. We need the eagerness and dedication to serve the community for us to thrive. Of the name that we came to agreement upon, we thought they had some of the best qualifications with over 25 years as a paramedic and firefighter and is currently serving as the chief deputy coroner of LaSalle County. His knowledge of firefighting operations, emergency medical services, first responders, dispatching investigations and health department operations throughout the county make him an excellent selection as a health and safety commissioner. If no one else has any further questions or comments, I can make a motion.
Make your motion, Jeff.
All right, I'd like to make a motion to appoint Terry Udis as Health and Safety Commissioner for the City of Oglesby, Illinois.
Thank you. Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so the mayor didn't nominate at all. A motion was made, there was a second on the floor, and that was that. So as far as, you know, how past practice was, I mean, you saw what I saw. That's all I had.
Can you still drive, since you're up there for me, could you do that? Could you still drive, that'd be okay? First thing I'd like to point out with that, if you notice, it's what we talked about ahead of time. So we actually had a closed session before that, I believe.
And we're going to have a closed session tonight.
Okay, all right, fair enough. If you take a look, if you go to the subsection of where it said the 3.1.50, that one right there. Because what it's saying is, yes, the vacancy occurs in any of these offices, that, under this section is what it's talking about. I know you're trying to say because of the or there, it doesn't apply. So if you go to that section, I'd like to show you why it does apply. Because if you're saying that 3.1-10-50 doesn't apply in any way, shape or form to us, you are very wrong. If you could go to that.
What I'm saying is, is this is very clear, the remaining members of the council.
If you could go to that for me, please.
I mean, you can do your own homework, I don't need to be up here doing it for you.
You brought it up here, I could. Because as our own attorney did tell us, it would apply in the right condition. And it does apply for all the, it lists all the rules about how somebody, there's a vacancy, how they have to resign, how they have to, it gives everything. Right there, so it talks about, that's where we get the information about why it has to be notarized, signed by them before they're actually effective.
That was all done.
But if you scroll down to F, it gives you all the procedures.
Keep going, Tony.
And all of this does apply to us.
You're just at D, Tony, you got to keep going.
Yeah. Right? There, right there, okay. So that applies to us. The problem is, I'm going to help you out, it's this line right here. If a vacancy occurs with less than 28 months remaining in the unexpired portion of the term or less than 130 days before the general election, then you do all this stuff. And that's where it gives the mayor the authority to do those things.
Only in, only in an aldermanic form of government, ours is very clear, villages, we're not a village.
We had more than 28 months.
Scroll down, right there, other elective office.
Other elective office.
That does apply to us.
How does this apply when you have over 28 months?
I think you're 100% wrong.
That's the point I'm trying to make.
So what is all this banter about, why are we even discussing this?
Well, you're the one saying that this doesn't apply, it does. The problem is, the problem is there isn't a clearly defined thing. And that's why I'd like to get a ruling from the Attorney General's Office. You've gotten, you held up the Attorney General's.
Okay, let's take a vote. Do we want to hold this up? Okay.
So what I'm asking for is to, the time to get an Attorney General response, we did it for a bucket truck, but we're not going to do it for the appointment authority?
No.
Okay.
I think this is an overreaching power, I think it's a total power.
A total?
Excellent, yeah. I think for anybody that's paying attention says.
Clearly 28 months or less.
City government, it's a power grab at the finest. It's the remaining members, group of us, not one man.
Never said it was. All right, there's no motion, I'll move on. All right, come on now. All right, number 18, public comments over any topic.
I have more questions than that. So just, actually, I'm taking the LSAT this week on Thursday, so I figured this would be good practice. I'm not too confident based off of my practice scores so far, but you know, fingers crossed. My question is, Pat, with this commission part, right? The part, not the broad one that applies generally, but the specific one that applies to commission form of government. When it says, if a vacancy occurs in any of these offices, the remaining members of the council, within 30 days after the vacancy occurs, shall appoint a person to fill the vacancy for the balance of the unexpired term or until the vacancy is filled by interim election under section 3.1-10-50. Is, when it says, and again, this is probably just a matter of interpretation, but when it says, until the vacancy is filled by interim election under section 3.1-10-50, is that specifying, the way I reading it at least, is that you have to fill, like in this case, where we have to have like an election or whatever, is section 3.1-10-50 just specifying how that election is to be held? Is that what that's referencing?
I think so, honestly, yes.
Because that's my read of it.
Right, but it's either referring you to that other general section, which usually doesn't apply to commission forms of government.
Yeah, yeah.
So.
Yeah. My read from that is not, is not that we're deferring, that we're throwing out the commission form, that part entirely. It's just that we're saying, the elections will, the election will be held under the guidelines of that section.
I think that's exactly what it says.
Thank you.
What I actually think, in my opinion, there is, if you look at the general section, it says 60 days. But because of that one, because of commission form, it says 30. So that's, that's the only thing I saw that was different, but. All right, any other?
It's very confusing, no doubt.
Any other comments on public comment? If there are none, we'll go into commissioner reports, Commissioner Stefanielli.
Thank you, we'll be performing our annual audit with Hopkins and Associates in a short period here. And I simply ask that traffic in and out of the clerk's office for non-essential items be limited so that they can stay focused on the audit. And if there are any questions about the audit, please feel free to see me. Thank you.
Mr. McDermott.
Okay, hydrant flush begins this week. And as far as the tree branches go, I know I've got a lot of phone calls. The clerk's office received some phone calls. You guys are busy right now, they'll get to the branches just as soon as they can. I apologize for any inconvenience, okay? That's it.
Mr. Baldridge.
Yeah. May 25th Bark in the Park, Lehigh Park, was a great success. The clerk's office put on a first-time event that raised just over $1,140 in donations, mostly due to a gracious donor who asked to remain anonymous. Also due to our doggy photographer Doug Dullinger donating all his work. Thank you very much for those generous donations. Wes Black also put together a disc golf tournament and is said to have raised over $1,000 for Ivar. We are proud of everyone's efforts to spend a day in our beautiful park with our funny or furry friends. Thank you to all involved. EV charging stations are coming soon to the city parking lot. Our electrical superintendent has spent numerous hours researching and developing a plan to allow Oglesby to get ahead of the game regarding electrical vehicle charging. After some pushback on a larger plan, he provided us with a way to place four ports in the existing lot while costing the city roughly $6,000. IMEA, our electrical provider, will be donating $12,494 for this project. I'd like to thank Weare Oglesby for spending some time of theirs cleaning the monuments again this year, Memorial Park Saturday before the memorial ceremony. They also donated and dedicated a bench to the Lance family, who helped tremendously with their plastic bag collection last year. Last Tuesday, for opening day of our public pool, our pump burned out. Our crews were able to collaborate and along with our Oglesby friends at Full Circle Industrial, they had the pump rebuilt and replaced for opening day on the next day. Thank you for everyone that helped out and we look forward to another enjoyable summer at the Oglesby Pool. And then June 13th to 16th, on those same pool grounds will be our summer fun fest. Thanks mostly to the clerks and JP, there has been over a year's worth of planning for this and it's going to be the biggest and best, I hope to see everyone there.
Excellent, thank you. As far as health and safety goes, the only thing I have is, tonight was the ambulance association dinner for all the pork chops and applesauce, I appreciate everybody that bought into that. The line was incredibly long and I think I finally just got some, like maybe even 20 minutes before I got here. So a lot of people participated, appreciate that. Mayor's report. Things I got is Taylor Swift tickets. So the first time event, you know, the Bark in the Park was fantastic, that was the first time event. The Taylor Swift dance party is going to be another event this weekend. If you haven't bought your tickets ahead of time, that'd be wonderful if you could. It helps else kind of gauge the food vendors to know how much staffing and how much stuff they need to have there so the lines won't be so long. It's going to be a great family-friendly event, so I hope you get an opportunity to check it out. Number two, the garage sales for the 14th and 15th. If you can give the clerk's office a heads up, preferably by this Friday, so that way they can get you promoted on the list when it goes out before Fun Fest and everything. And then the last item is obviously Fun Fest. You know, not a whole lot to say about this one, it's the best, it's the best fest we have and as far as I'm concerned, in the entire Illinois Valley, it's going to be great, it's going to be huge this year. We got a lot of great musical performances, but more so than just musical performances, we're bringing back a lot of things that are other than musical. We got the log rolling, the carving, the reptile, the kids in the park, there should be a lot of great things for it. So hopefully the weather will agree and we will have an amazing Fun Fest like we do every single year. That being said, next item 21 is executive session. See, the first one we got, we removed, so it is, the appointment employment compensation, discipline performance or dismissal of a specific employees, 5 ILCS 120/2C1, and the selection of a person to fill a public office as defined in the OMA, including a vacancy in a public office when the public body is given the power to appoint under law ordinance 5 ILCS 120/2C3. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion, we'll go into executive session.
Second.
Let's get this.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye. Hi.
Currie?
Hi. Um, I don't know how long will be an executive session, but afterwards, there is on the agenda for commissioner appointment, we'll have to see what happens with that. Uh, and then the last item is just to draft some updated ordinances for stuff, but no action on that, so. All right, thank you, everybody.
Oh my God.
Right.
Right. Yeah. I mean, you're seeing it. You're really doing it. Uh, you know, so that's. Well, I need to. I can't. Uh. Maybe. I'm not. That's. Yeah. Yeah. I hear you. I'm. So. It's. Yeah. Yeah. I want to. Yeah. 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 I think. But. I do. This is. I'm. Yes. I just. Yeah. Not that. Um, no. Uh, uh, this. But it's. Right. Uh. Yeah. Right. First thing. I'm. It's. It's. Okay. It is. Yeah. It's. Well. It is. Uh. I have. I don't know. I don't. Yeah. Well. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. 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 It's. I love it. You. Yeah. That's it. That's. I got it. Yeah. And. So. Oh. What? Yeah. Thank you. Yeah. And what you didn't want inside. That's making yourself. Like. Right. You like. We. Uh. Oh. Well. Yeah. 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 We are. We. Uh. I. It's. You. It's. Okay. I think. I'm. I'm. I don't know. Right. Give it. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. So. I. Um. Yeah. Uh. Maybe. There's. There. Wow. It's. It's. Uh. Oh. Really? Maybe. Uh. That's. That's. Yeah. I don't. I don't. Yeah. That's. I just. Yeah. They still. I. Should. The. Sorry. You work. Yeah. Right. Yeah. Oh, yeah. That is. We. We. All right. All right. All right. Woo. You. Yeah. Yeah. All right. Thanks. Is. Really? Yeah. She didn't. I don't. I can. I would. I'm. Yeah. 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 Okay. Hey. What is? I don't. I. Yeah. Well. Yeah. I see. Yeah. It's. Yeah. Yeah. See. Yeah. Well. Like. Thanks. Yeah. 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 Very. Well. Yeah. Yeah. Joy. Yeah. Yeah. You. I'm. I should. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. Thank you. Yeah. That's. This is. And. Yeah. That's. Okay. You. What? I know. It's. Yeah. 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 So. So. Remember. I. I. You're. There. Yeah. That's. Hey. Well. Yeah. All right. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. What? What? I don't. This. How? Yeah. Oh. See. What? Okay. Yeah. 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 The. You. I'm. Yeah. That's. Yes. Yeah. 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 That's. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. I'm. Yeah. Yeah. Please. You're. Yeah. That's. It's. Yeah. Right. Yeah. 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 Sure. The. Yeah. That's. Right. Well. Yeah. It's. I don't. It's. And. Yeah. If. Yeah. But. Yeah. 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 Right. Yeah. Yeah. That's. You. Yeah. So. Yeah. I. Yeah. Right. Yeah. 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 Sure. Yeah. 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 I'll. I'll. I could. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I don't. I was. Yeah. Yeah. It's. Yeah. 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 Uh. She's. Yeah. 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 Why? It's. Yeah. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Did you? Probably. Yeah. So. Yeah. What? Oh. Yeah. I'm just saying. Yeah. I need to. What? Uh. I have to. That work. Yeah. Right. This is the way. Later, yeah. Oh. We got it. Okay. Okay. Yeah. Oh. Yeah. Oh. Sure. He's done. I. She found it. But. Yeah. 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 Yes. I hear you. Yeah. 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 Yes. Yeah. Oh. Where am I? It's. Yeah. Here. But. I guess. Like, you have to be able to. Four. You're. Good. Uh, yeah. 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 Okay. Yeah. 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 We want. That's. Well, yeah. Well, like. I. I. Uh. Oh. This. I just. Say. I see. Well. I. I. Oh. Um. Well. Well. I know. Yeah. Oh. I mean, I. So I'm just. I don't know. It's like. Yeah. Yeah. Okay. I got. There we go. Yeah. Ready for. Oh. Yeah. So. It. I'm. So. I did. It's. It's. All right. Yeah. I don't know. All right. Sure. Yeah. We did that. We did that. So. Okay. I don't. So. So. A little girl. Yeah. We. Sure. Yeah. Not yet. Yeah. Well. This is my idea. Yeah. And. Yeah. I'm. I'm sure. I'm. Okay. Yeah. I think. What? I think so. Yeah. I think so. Well. No. Well, thank you. Couple. You exactly. Yeah. Somebody go outside and see if there's something out there. They're funny. Ah. Oh. I said, I was. I, I said, I was. He said, you were thinking. I said, you're right.
Tony, did you turn? The sound back on?
Thanks for talking. We're good.
Oh, yeah, we got her again. Um. Going back into open session, roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Steph Nellie.
Here.
Kern.
Here. Number twenty-four, Commissioner Appointment. Okay, this is the time where most people are probably waiting for, um. We, okay, uh. Might be a little early in appointing people, but if we got good candidates, we have good candidates. Um, I. Uh, we had six people that applied. Of the six, five were legally qualified, one was a resident of LaSalle. Um, I'd like to thank the remaining five legally qualified applicants for stepping up to perform civic duty in our amazing city of Oglesby. Uh, we deliberated for a bit, um, and really kind of took a look at, uh, different qualifications, and we really appreciate that. Um. The, the thing I'd like to talk about is a candidate that we think applied is not only a qualified candidate, but probably one of the best selections as a short-term bill because of their already established experience in Oglesby is Don Finley. While I might not have seen eye to eye on all policies and practices in the past, I will say two things. With having nine years as mayor and one year as commissioner specific to Oglesby, we probably have all, the least amount of on-the-job training needed. Two, I've never had a concern that Mr. Finley had anything but the best long-term interest of Oglesby at heart, and has proven himself when it comes to be fantastic at economic development. Is there any discussion on that topic and/or can I get a motion on the appointment of?
I'll make a motion that we appoint Don Finley for a council.
First, I'd like to thank all the people that did apply for this. We appreciate your time and efforts here, and you guys were all, were all considered very well. We appreciate everything you did there.
And I, and I, and I think for the other candidates, you guys should run. You should run when the time comes because, uh, you'd have my vote, hundred percent.
It was a tough decision.
It was a tough decision because y'all were very likable.
But I will second the motion.
Any other comments? And then going off record.
Well, I would like to also thank everybody as well. Thanks for putting in. Appreciate it.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. All right, do we want to, do we have stuff for an oath ready? Do you have anything that, ready, or is it too soon to do that?
Why don't we just do it the next?
Do you want to do the oath?
Beginning of the next.
Beginning of the next meeting.
Would you, would you be okay doing an oath at the beginning of the next meeting? Sounds wonderful. Okay. Um, next item we had on here was draft updated ordinances to address COLA increases for the city clerk and the ambulance director. I think we talked about that, and there is a couple of the things going, especially now that there, there's a new boss for, uh, one of those departments. I think we decided that we wanted to.
We want a table.
I'll move the table.
Okay.
Second.
Now, second down.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number twenty-six is adjourned. If there's nothing further, I can get a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Aldridge.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Steph Nellie.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
Rich? What do you think? You know, it's really supposed to be. Was it too aggressive in there? We didn't think so.